Am I on? Yep, yep, yep. Okay, good evening, everyone. So glad to see you this evening, this Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, for our regular meeting of the 77th Monrovia City Council. And I am calling this meeting to order at 7:32 PM. We will then start with an invocation by Chaplain Steve, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Sergio Jimenez. Chaplain.
We come to you tonight and dedicate all the things that will be discussed, and talked about, and debated, and dreamed of for the future. When I pray for a spirit of respect, of unity, of a direction for Monrovia, both for the leadership, families, and the citizens that would be for their good. I pray that your goodness would lead all of our hearts, especially in times like these. May you become a firm foundation for us to treat each other with love, with respect, and with grace. So we pray for tonight, and pray that you would lead us in all the things that need to be done. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and face our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergio. We did not have a closed session. We did have a study session before... Oh, roll call, the small details. Yes, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Beldon...
Present.
Jimenez...
Present.
Spicer...
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kelly...
Here.
And Mayor Chevlin.
Here. As I was saying, we don't, we didn't have a closed session, but we did have an awesome study session on our budget, and we will be ready to go to have the final presentation at our next council meeting. But for right now, we are going to go ahead and go to our presentations and proclamations. And first up is PR1, proclaiming June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And I do have someone here. I've got Amanda Castellanos, a board member for the Underdog Bookstore and Events, Inc., and she will be here. She will accept the proclamation. So Amanda, you could go ahead, and you can stand at the podium. You can make some comments afterwards. But I will read the proclamation. Whereas since the founding of our nation, America has continued to forge a more inclusive society, living by the founding principle that all people are created equal. And whereas President Bill Clinton, on June 2nd, 2000, declared June as Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the June 1969 Stonewall uprising in Lower Manhattan, which was foundational in the civil rights movement for the LGBTQ+ community. And on June 7th, 2009, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration further by declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas times and attitudes have changed in the language used to discuss sexual orientation and gender identity, has also changed with the inclusion of queer and questioning among other sexual minorities. And whereas the city of Monrovia recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and we must retain, remain committed to combating discrimination against any person based on race, ethnicity, national origin, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, age, and citizenship status to ensure the growth and success of our city. And whereas the city of Monrovia is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of the city. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, and other sexual minorities, as well as their supporters, come together in various celebrations of pride. Now, therefore, I, Becky Chevlin, Mayor of the city of Monrovia, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and encourage all residents to celebrate our rich diversity and advance equity and ensure opportunities for all dated this third day of June 2025. And again, we're presenting this certificate, or this proclamation to the Underdog Book and Event... Did I say that right? Events, the, I wanted to say the right name. The, it's a nonprofit, Underdog Bookstore and Events, Inc. And Amanda, you may want to, or Amber, excuse me, you might want to make some comments, and we'll come down and get a picture with you afterwards.
Okay. Does this work? I'm not sure.
Yeah, it works.
Okay, okay. Um, so my good friend Keely cannot stand for seeing Underdog closed, so she created a nonprofit to continue to have it as a safe space for anyone in Monrovia who wanted to just feel safe and feel like they had a space to be themselves. And since then, I feel like we have blossomed, not only as a business, but in the community. And I look forward to many more things to come. Happy Pride Month, and yeah, thank you.
Okay, and let's come down, and we'll get a picture.
I go up there? Oops.
Okay, this, this next one, PR2, proclaiming June 9th through 15th, 2025 as Men's Health Week. And although I don't, we don't have anyone to actually present it to, there are plenty of men here, and we want to be equal opportunity here. We also talked many times about, obviously, breast cancer awareness and many women's issues. We wanted to give the same attention to men's issues in health as well. And I've asked Dr. Kelly to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just a quick note, that men's health is so important, and proper screening is so important. It was because of a routine checkup and a follow-up that my husband was, he found that he had, he needed quadruple bypass surgery, and it actually saved his life. So this is important, and thank you for the opportunity to read. Whereas, Men's Health Month is part of an ongoing international effort to educate men, boys, and their families about receiving regular disease prevention screening and living healthier lifestyles. And whereas, nationwide, life expectancy for men averages five years fewer than that of women, with men experiencing higher rates of health problems such as diabetes, obesity, cancer, heart disease, and premature mortality. And whereas, Men's Health Month is a time for the public to recognize the mental and physical health needs of men and boys, while encouraging fathers to be role models for their children through preventative health screening, healthy living, and seeking needed help. And whereas, the growing epidemic of suicide and substance abuse requires special effort to raise awareness of unrecognized and undiagnosed depression and mental stress in boys and men. And whereas, the centerpiece of Men's Health Month is National Men's Health Week, a special awareness period passed by Congress and signed into law by President Bill Clinton in May 31st, 1994. Now, therefore, I, Becky Chevlin, Mayor of the city of Monrovia, California, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim June 9th through the 15th, 2025, as National Men's Health Week. The purpose of Men's Health Week is to promote and heighten the awareness of preventative health problems, and for men and boys to seek regular medical advice and encourage early detection and treatment of disease, including cancer, heart disease, and depression, dated this third day of June 2025.
Thank you. And so to all you gentlemen, young, middle-aged, older, all of you, please take care of yourself and get those checkups, and we want to keep you around for a long time. So thank you, Dr. Kelly. And we can have, since we don't have anyone to give the proclamation to, if we could put that over at the library. And then PR3, proclaiming June 14th as Race Unity Day. And we have Barbara Golar, who is here from the local spiritual assembly of the Baha'i faith of Monrovia. And I've asked Mr. Spicer here if he would please read the proclamation. And Barbara, you can come on up.
Okay. So whereas the city of Monrovia recognizes that strength is derived from its residents and it strives to bring awareness, recognition, and celebration of the diversity among us, to safeguard the freedom and values for which our city stands, and the unity of our community and residents. And whereas, our proud history has been achieved through the contributions of diverse fabric of races, ethnicities, and cultures, and we are committed to maintaining mutual respect, social justice, and equality as fundamental aspects of our community. And whereas Race Unity Day was started by the Baha'i National Spiritual Assembly in 1957 as an observance to promote racial harmony and understanding. And whereas, we dedicate this day as a symbol of solidarity, recognizing the variety of backgrounds, races, genders, sexual orientations, ages, religion, as well as the numerous cultural perspectives, innovations, and contribution by all represented within our great city. And encourage everyone to honor, recognize, and embrace diversity through our workplace, our schools, our community, and our country. And now, therefore, I, Becky Chevlin, Mayor of the great city of Monrovia, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 14, 2025, as the Race Unity Day. In the city of Monrovia, and encourage all residents and community members to explore, celebrate, and embrace those who have contributed to the richness of our city, our community, and our nation, dated this third day of June 2025.
Thank you very much, Larry. And I think Barbara has a little to tell us about June 14th. Something special is happening.
Yes, yes. Actually, we restarted in actually giving out awards. So we're very happy that this year, that this year we'll be handing out two awards in the work that they've done in the community. Actually, before I even say that, I think what happened this morning is also contribute to our city. You know, I was born and raised, I'm a native Monrovia. And what happened this morning with the groundbreaking, it just really showed how we are here in, in Monrovia. So anyway, that just popped in my head, so I had to share that. Anyway, so we have the opportunity to, our two people that we are honoring is Sandy Byrne for her work in actually assisting and bringing the story of the Jones sisters, Anna H. Jones and Dr. Sophia Jones. And we're also honoring them as well. This year was really, this actually was the first time that we had enough people that, to really kind of pull from. And it was kind of unanimously to vote these individuals in. So once again, we'll be having some family members from the Jones family coming on Saturday at Recreation Park.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I think it's very nice that we have both these proclamations, the one on Pride Month, and...
Absolutely.
And this one as well, at our meeting this evening. And we want to come down and take some pictures. Tonight, we do have, well, we finished with our proclamations. We do not have a student government representative report. Those will resume in September. Their graduation is tomorrow night, so that's exciting. There is, I do have a change in the order of business, and it's somebody's 40th birthday. Dylan Fake will be 40 on June 10th. And since that is in between our two council meetings, we wanted to make sure that, that we wished him a very happy 40th birthday. Yeah. So we're gonna, we're going to sing, sing here on the count of three. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you, cha-cha-cha. Happy birthday to you, cha-cha-cha. Happy birthday, dear Dylan. Happy birthday to you, and many more. All right, speech, speech.
Can I just, one, thank you very much. Can I just share the same wish that I made earlier? Was that this meeting concludes at 7:45?
We've already gone over. I'm good, I'm good. Oh, boy. So we hope we've sufficiently surprised you. But 40th is a big birthday, so we wanted to make sure that we covered that. And I still need to sign your card. I bought it, but I haven't signed it yet. Okay, we, moving along then to our consent calendar, which are items CC1 through CC13. We do have, one item, CC8 is polled, and that will be...
Madam Mayor, CC8 is, just has a correction?
Oh, it just has a correction.
But CC11.
Oh, okay, all right. It has a correction, and it said it should be ending June 30th, 2028, instead of 2025. And then CC11, though, we have had a request from Councilman Beldon to poll that item for discussion. So if we could go ahead and take a motion with that correction, and then with CC11 polled, we can take, we can approve the consent calendar, and then hear the CC11.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I let, go ahead and do it, roll call.
Councilmembers Beldon...
Yes.
Jimenez...
Yes.
Spicer...
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kelly...
Yes.
And Mayor Chevlin.
Yes. Okay, then we will go back then to item CC11. Are we ready? Can we do that now? And that is going in, Mr. Tchiki... Yes, we do, I do have one speaker card, but I'll go ahead and let Mr. Tchiki provide the report.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item for you tonight, CC11, is a maintenance contract with West Coast Arborists for a period ending June 30th, 2027, with two one-year options to extend. WCA, as we commonly refer to them, is our tree maintenance contractor. They provide what we call grid trimming services for the city. They do a myriad of other services as well, including tree and stump removal, emergency response. Most notably during the January 6th windstorm and power outages, WCA was one of the vendors that we called upon to respond to that emergency. And so we've been working with them for a number of years now. I've been happy with their services. The item before you tonight, again, is a contract with them for two years, with two-year, one-year options. In the Monrovia Municipal Code, Section 3.24.120, Subsection A2, the city does have the ability to purchase, to have the ability, purchase of supplies, equipment, and services for the city shall be exempt from the purchasing provisions when it is to the city's advantage to combine its purchases with another governmental entity. What I mean by that is, it's commonly referred to as a piggybacking procurement process. And so we work closely with Mr. Steele's office to ensure that procurement processes are followed accordingly. What we did then as staff is we looked at a number of different recent RFP processes, namely, the city of Rialto is the one that we chose. WCA, along with a number of other vendors, proposed on that contract with Rialto. WCA was the low bid. Primarily, the contract is made up of a lot of grid trimming services. Our city has over 8,000 trees. And so we try to trim at least 20% of those trees every year so that we have a regular maintenance cycle. So that does, that take up the lion's share of the contract and its budget. So when looking at the contract for Rialto, WCA was the low bid for grid trimming pricing at $75 per tree. Mariposa Tree Management was at $83.50. And then we have two other vendors that were well over $100 per tree. And so when looking at this, along with the other myriad of services that I mentioned earlier, including tree and stump removal, tree planting, emergency services, WCA was consistently lower than the other vendors across the board. And so when we're looking at putting together a budget, which you had a study session earlier tonight on, as well as two weeks ago, as staff, we felt it was a good business decision to look at fixed price costs that were represented in this RFP that would allow us to have more flexibility as we implement our O&amp;M budgets moving forward. And so we are moving, we are recommending that we move forward with WCA. As I noted, for that two-year contract with two option years, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we open it up for the comments, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have a separate contract. This does not include our tree planting program.
That's correct. And so on an annual basis, council has allocated about $75,000 for a tree planting program. That is a separate contract, and that would be reviewed and approved by the council at a later date. We would work with a vendor to develop that planting plan and program, and then council would then look at it after staff has reviewed it. And then we would ultimately get council's approval and then implement.
Thank you. Did, did you have a comment, Mr. Steele?
I do, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We want to note that the council has been supplied with a letter that was received today from Great Scott Tree Care, dated June 3rd, 2025. It is couched as a formal protest regarding the award of the tree maintenance contract. And I just want to say, we've reviewed it. It really is not a protest regarding price or regarding, you know, sort of noncompliance with any of the laws that might be applicable to this contract. It's really a letter that states it's a wrong, it's the wrong idea to go through this piggybacking process. But in my view, it doesn't raise any issue of any concern with regard to the legal aspects of awarding this contract. If the council is persuaded by the policy arguments that have been made, that's up to the council. But as a matter of, as a legal issue, it's not a valid protest and doesn't need to be entertained any further.
Thank you very much. We do have, I at least have the one speaker card. Dennis Jones, representing Mariposa Tree Management. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council. My name is Dennis Jones, and I represent Mariposa Tree Management. We are a tree care company with strong roots in the San Gabriel Valley, and we're here today to respectfully request that you guys go against staff's recommendation to award this contract to West Coast Arborists via a piggyback off of Rialto. We understand the city's desire for efficiency, and piggybacking contracts can sometimes seem like a streamlined approach. However, we've seen this exact same scenario before. In 2021, the city of Monrovia piggybacked off the city of Highland for the same contract. While convenient, this practice does not allow for competition or nuance that the city of Monrovia's urban forest contains. Why are Rialto and Highland the best contracts to piggyback off of? Last I checked, they're not very similar in the city's urban forest with regards to its trees. Mariposa Tree Management is deeply invested in this community. Several of our employees live right here in Monrovia, contributing to the local economy and fabric of the city. Our office is just down the road in Irwindale. My wife grew up in the city. My cousin lives in the city. My two best friends live in the city. Furthermore, we have a certified arborist on our staff who lives within the city boundaries. And he went to Monrovia High School. Now, we're not asking for any favoritism because of our local ties. We just want a shot at the price, at the bid, at the contract. The current staff report is only gathering pricing that shows WCA in a positive light with their costs.
Thank you.
There are multiple examples where we could show the opposite narrative that is being put forth in this staff report. Why have Rialto and Highland been the comparative bids to the piggyback with Fontana and Temple City being examples in the staff report? Because they show WCA in a favorable light. What about other local foothill community cities? The point is that every contract and every bid is different. There's a lot of nuance when it comes to tree care, and with the city not ever going out to bid, how do you know you're getting the best value for your, for your citizens? In fact, just a couple of weeks ago, the city of Azusa went out, and they, West Coast, bid their trees at $70 a tree, and you guys are paying 75. A competitive bidding process ensures transparency, allows for innovative approaches, and ultimately provides the best value for Monrovia taxpayers. We are confident that we could, if given the opportunity to bid, our proposal would be highly competitive, offering exceptional service at a fair price, while keeping jobs and tax dollars within our community. We urge you to reconsider staff's recommendation. Let's ensure Monrovia's tree care contracts are awarded through a truly competitive, transparent process that benefits the city and its residents. Staff will argue that this will put the city without a contract in place, leaving them vulnerable. But having a monthly contract for a few months until a contract gets let is, is very doable and has been done by a lot of other local cities. Please do the right thing and put this out to bid. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any other speaker cards?
Mayor, just clarify, I have a speaker card that I think is for items not on the agenda for Tom Dohr. Is that correct? That's for items not on the agenda? Perfect, that's all.
Okay. Anyone else wanting to speak to this item? Please come up. If you could please just state your name there.
Yes, my name's Jennifer McDonald. I'm a Monrovia resident. And I am a criminal defense attorney. But in the last year, I have spent a lot of time with arborists in the community, learning a lot about trees. And so I think I'm a little bit of an expert at this point. I agree with everything this gentleman said. And also, I just wanted to put forth this idea that myself and other community members that I've met are interested... that myself and other community members that I've met are interested in taking part in this process of helping grow our urban canopy. And so we're volunteers, different walks of life, and we're here and we're ready to help out in any way we can too. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, then, last call on this item. Not seeing any, then we'll close the public comment, and I'll bring it back to our city council here. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, yeah, mine, just really quick. As it relates to the bidding process, have we put it out to bid, or when's the last time we've been able to do that? Or have we just been satisfied with what we've had?
It's been several years since we've put out a full RFP for tree management services, like what they're referencing. We have been very satisfied with the work that WCA has been doing over the last several years, especially during the duration here. Like I mentioned earlier, WCA was one of the vendors that we called upon during January 6th, power outages and windstorms. Every emergency that has happened here locally, WCA has responded, and we've been satisfied with their service.
And you said three years? We've been with them for three years?
Longer than that. It's been, I believe, nine-plus years now with this service.
I think.
I'm sorry, just if I could clarify one issue on, I think, to make sure everybody understands the piggybacking quote-unquote issue, which is that the municipal code only allows using another city's process when that process itself was competitively bid. So we're relying on, in this case, Rialto's bid process that was a competitive bid process that reached the price that West Coast has agreed to provide for Monrovia through this contract. So it's not correct to say that this was not competitively bid, because that's the essence of the municipal code provision, is allowing for us to rely on another entity's public bidding process.
Thank you.
I have a question. So you're satisfied with the level of service? So the only thing at issue, the decision was made strictly on a financial basis?
Yes, so by having the fixed price, that allows us then to build out our budget. So like I mentioned earlier, with Buffy and the administrative services team, as they're looking at our fiscal year '25, '26, and '26, '27 budgets, by having fixed pricing that we can account for, it allows us to better account and forecast what we're going to be spending for the next fiscal year and beyond.
And during the emergency, the most recent emergency, you felt satisfied that they responded quickly and effectively?
Yes.
Okay.
Edward.
And I mean, I want to say thanks for, I know you guys look out for our best interests. We appreciate that, of course. But I definitely understand, and it does seem, in my only opinion, that sometimes when we create our own RFPs and are able to make sure it's tailored to our specific needs, so we don't have to worry if there's some nuances in other cities, we may sometimes have some better outlook. But I know I had a chance to ask some questions earlier, that you guys did go and look at some of the other costs and items that necessarily aren't called out in the board report itself, but to make sure that those were also going to be in our best interest. So appreciate that.
No problem.
Any other questions? And if, I think you did explain that briefly, if we did not proceed tonight and we did go out for bid, that process would be, the length of time?
Conservatively, somewhere between two and three months. Development of a full bid document or RFP, soliciting bids takes a good amount of time. We'd have to advertise, so at least two to three months, if not a little bit longer.
And this contract does terminate the end of June, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, any other questions? Then with that, we do have a recommendation under the consent item. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement with West Coast Arborists for tree maintenance services in an annual amount not to exceed $412,563, and brush clearance services in an annual amount not to exceed $10,000 for the period ending June 30th, 2027, with two one-year options to extend with an increase of no more than the annual Common Labor Cost Index of Engineering News Record for the Los Angeles area, not to exceed 6% if extended, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents in a form approved by the city attorney.
Do we have a second? Okay, we do not have a second to the motion. Is there, well, it's not really a substitute motion, but do we have a different motion?
I can make a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, we do have a motion and a second to accept CC 11, as Mr. Spicer had read. Can we have, please have a roll call vote.
Council members, Beldon.
No.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Sorry, Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mayor Chevlin.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alex. Okay, moving on then to our portion of our meeting, public input, and I want to thank you all for coming and joining us for tonight's meeting. And this is the opportunity for you to address the city council on items that are not on our agenda. And did we receive any?
Yes, we have.
We do have some speaker cards, and you each have a three-minute limit, and there are opportunities then if you would like to address the other items that are actually on the agenda, you can do so by filling out a speaker card. But right now, for our input, we have, starting with Tom Dower. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Tom Dower. I'm a resident of Monrovia, Mayor Chevlin, city council, and city staff. I'd like to share my concerns on a matter of public safety. Unlike, ultimately, I'd like to see the city spend Measure K dollars or other city funds to monitor the integrity and performance of the streetlights in our city. I have an interest in this because at the end of January 2025, my friend was driving north on Mayflower Avenue to my house on a Friday night around 7:00 PM, and he hit and seriously injured a pedestrian jaywalking across the street near Palm Avenue. It was a Myrtle Street Fair night, and there was a lot of traffic and foot traffic out. He reports he was going below the speed limit, and he just did not see the elderly pedestrian. A week later, he was cited by the Monrovia Police and ultimately had to pay a fine and attend traffic school. The night it happened, I walked down the street and found that there was two streetlights in a row out on the same side of the street on Mayflower near Palm Avenue, exactly where the accident happened. I felt really bad about this mishap, and I figured there must be a way to keep the lights on in the city. In this case, ultimately, these lights were finally fixed late in May, after some legwork with Edison and Public Works. I've used the Edison Street Light Outage App, a way to report streetlight outages. When I reported these lights on Mayflower, nothing was fixed for over a month. I then contacted the city. They also said the lights were Edison's, and I needed to pursue the issue with them. They said they would report the same. I reported them again to Edison and waited a week, still nothing. Then I contacted the Edison District Manager in Monrovia, and she helped resolve the problem. These lights out were not just an outlier. Last night, while driving a mile down from my house, I noticed four streetlights in various places, actually, two on North Mayflower were out. Coming home, I also found at least 12 streetlights out, including seven in a row on Foothill. This is a matter of minutes of driving. Relying on citizens to report streetlights out is not a prudent way for maintaining such an important service. Streetlights that work should be a priority that the city monitors, acts on, and follows up on when things don't work. I'm glad to see there are some four-way stops going on in some of these streets, which you voted on tonight, and the Safe Streets and Roads campaign underway, the city manager has shared with us. I'll definitely participate in that campaign. Safe streets, neighborhoods, and reliable utilities are what I urge the city prioritize and invest in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sam Yuland. Good evening.
The handout is from the California Department of Health Care Services website. As you can see, DHCS explicitly states it will not investigate complaints against sober living facilities, and that the permitting responsibilities are up to local cities. As we discussed at the city council meeting last month, the residents of May Avenue are not opposed to a compassionally-run, nonprofit sober living facility that treats its occupants with human decency. This would truly meet the Monrovia definition of supportive housing. We are, however, strongly opposed to a for-profit human warehouse. As described by public safety professionals, both at the May meeting and in private conversations with the city manager, the negative impacts of a for-profit human warehouse masquerading as a sober living facility are horrendous, even for a facility occupied exclusively by women. My understanding is that the proposed facility on May Avenue is currently undergoing permit review by city staff. The conditions of the use permit are critical to ensure the facility is run with compassion and does not exploit its occupants simply to maximize its profits. We realize the city council has not had time to act on the sober living ordinance we requested last month. However, existing Monrovia codes and standards should be faithfully applied to the conditions of the use permit. In the amendments to Monrovia Title 17, which the city council will be reviewing as the next item on tonight's agenda, Monrovia is setting a standard of 75 square feet per person of private living space, not including shared kitchens and bathrooms. This is under the single-room occupancy unit in Section 9. 75 square feet of bedroom space per person seems to be a reasonable standard to prevent human warehousing. We realize the permitting of a sober living facility is controversial. The city needs to understand that the state has washed their hands of unlicensed sober living facilities. The burden of protecting Monrovians, including the future facility occupants, falls solely on the city of Monrovia. The city of Monrovia needs to get this right. The conditions of the use permit need to assertively protect future occupants and the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Do we have anyone else wanting to provide public input on items not on our agendas? Carol.
I just want to share with our, I just want to share with our city and thank this city for the block party wagon that the city has received. It was a year ago that we acquired it in our city, and I tried to get it then, and I was told that the idea was to bring neighborhoods together. And so this year, I was able to get it, and we had 40 of our neighbors come together. And the wagon is provided, and it has tables and chairs and ice chests, games galore. And it's a really good thing. The city, when you're doing this, it is such a great idea because, you know, so many people live on a street and they don't know each other. We actually started our block party, this was our third one, but this is the first one with the wagon, and we're connected. We know each other's emails, phone numbers, and we know where we live. And so when we is new on the block, this is a time in our day when we come together and we get to meet each other and get caught up with each other. It's invaluable because when we had the Eaton fires, we were able to have that communication by email, by phone. It was invaluable, like when somebody's alarm goes off on their home or on their car, and you're able to call up. Or it's invaluable when you're parked on the wrong side of the street and the street stripper is coming and, you know.
You can call up and say, move your car.
It's just, and also, besides this, as an incentive, the city also pays $250 if you'll have a block party. So I just want to share with the citizens in Monrovia that this is a wonderful program, and thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else wanting to address the city council on items not on the agenda? Not seeing any, we will close then our public input, and we are going to move on then to our public hearings. Our first one up is PH 1, Amendment to Title 17, Zoning of the Monrovia Municipal Code, or Adding Inclusionary Housing Requirements as Chapter 17.42, Affordable Housing Requirements Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance Number 2025-03. And we have our community development director, Sherry Burmejo, who will present this evening. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for reading that long title. But it's a great title because we're at a place now where over the last nine months, the community and the council has been studying this idea of proposing a Monrovia Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Tonight, I want to be really brief, but provide enough information on what the ordinance entails and some basics about inclusionary housing, since we do have folks in our audience and those watching at home. And so the first, kind of kicking this off, I want to first talk about what is inclusionary housing? So inclusionary housing is a land use tool that allows cities to require developers who are producing market-rate housing units within their community to set aside a percentage of their units as affordable units. It's not the only planning tool that the city has to meet its renal goal, but it's probably one of the strongest tools that's available out there. Its main objective is to expand affordable housing in the community. And so thinking about affordable housing, how does a person qualify for affordable housing? So this is the Housing Affordable Income Levels that were just published by the state. These numbers highlight affordable housing income levels for 2025, and it's a big table with a lot of numbers, but you can see that it's based on household size and maximum income limits for the various categories, ranging from extremely low through moderate income. And the reason why the city council has been studying very much in depth, the idea of putting an inclusionary housing ordinance together, is because all, the state requires cities and counties to be responsible for providing or facilitating affordable housing production within their communities. And they do this by requiring and allocating a regional housing needs assessment to each city and county. The Monrovia requirement for our current six-cycle housing element is approximately a little over 1,600 units. The council has seen this slide before. We showcased it during our general planning annual report, and what it's telling us is Monrovia is still very attractive, attracted by developers. We are developing a lot of above-moderate units, but we could use some additional tools to make sure we can produce some of the units in those affordable income categories. So in all the thought that went into preparing the ordinance that's before you today in a synopsis, like I said, we spent approximately nine months. We conducted several city council study sessions. We also worked alongside, your city staff worked alongside, two consultants, one just Sagecrest Planning Environmental, who are here with us in the audience this evening, as well as Kaiser Marston, very reputable fiscal economy economist group. Sagecrest and staff conducted several surveys. We looked at public input, developer input, and what other cities in the San Gabriel Valley region were doing with respect to inclusionary housing. It's a very hot topic. And this ordinance that was put together was taken to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on April 9th, and the Planning Commission did recommend city council approval. It's important to note that this ordinance was really drafted to be Monrovia-centric. It's important to note that this ordinance was really drafted to be Monrovia-centric, and that's a good thing, because inclusionary housing should be city-centric. It was designed to be flexible and include a range of alternative compliance measures. And that is, by doing that, we're in line with state law, because the state does require to offer alternative means of compliance. It bundles the inclusionary housing requirement with the other incentives, like the state's density bonus, and it considers community priorities. Every inclusionary housing ordinance can focus on, you know, the economy of the city, the demographics, the housing market. For Monrovia, we felt it was very important to also include the land use plan and the land use values that are set forth in the city's general plan. Staff believes that it will produce affordable housing units with minimal impact to housing production and prices, and that it has been reviewed both by city staff, our consultants, and the city attorney's office to make sure that it is legally compliant with state law. The backbone of the ordinance is all the numbers and the requirements were based upon a fiscal analysis. And that fiscal analysis looked at the types of projects that are being proposed and built here within the city of Monrovia. It looked at a range of variables from size to density, height, parking, land use values in order to arrive at what the affordable gap is in Monrovia. And that was used to test scenarios for this requirement. This overall study yields a requirement that's very conservative, and that was important because we didn't want to stifle development. So then, now I'll walk you through the main meats and potatoes of the ordinance. And this first piece is the applicability. So the city of Monrovia's land use plan, over the last 30 years, has really planned for the high-density projects to be located near transit areas that are close to shopping. And so the first piece of the applicability of this ordinance was to focus it into where we have the highest densities in the city, where we're currently committed ourselves to achieve our renal goals, and that's within three planning areas: Station Square, Transit Village, the West Huntington Drive corridor, as well as the South Myrtle Avenue corridor. Currently, that's where our big housing developments are occurring. That's where we still expect them to occur. And not only does this align with the general plan land use vision, but it also protects the other residential lower-density neighborhoods from impacts of neighborhood compatibility or disrupting settings where we have our cherished historic resources. This approach also capitalizes on where we have existing infrastructure investments that have already occurred, and it puts housing near transit. But beyond those key target areas, we also threw in some other nets to capture additional affordable housing citywide. And this first one is to align any future housing elements, sites inventory with this requirement. Right now, the majority of our units are anticipated in those planning areas, but let's say in eight years from now, they're in different areas of the city. The ordinance would automatically capture those sites. Anytime a developer comes to the city and requests a change in the land use plan for increased density or for going from non-residential to a residential use, this ordinance would automatically require the provision of the inclusionary housing based on the requirement. And then we also built in to protect against those state laws that allow buy-right housing in non-residential areas. And if that were to occur in one of our major shopping centers, we could say this ordinance So now let's talk about the affordability requirement. This ordinance was designed to work with both ownership projects, those are for sale projects, and rental projects. For ownership projects, the requirement would be 10% of its units to be set aside for moderate income. For the rental projects, we created a three-tier process. And this is to, for the lower, it's harder to manage a big in-lief fee requirement on small projects. So that is why from the project range of 5 to 20, the requirement would be 6% at low income. From 21 to 49 units, it would be a 10% low-income requirement. And then for anything greater than 50, it would be a 15% low-income requirement. And these thresholds are all backed by that fiscal analysis prepared by Kaiser Marston. But in addition to those requirements, state law does require cities to have alternative means of compliance when they're implementing an inclusionary housing ordinance. This ordinance builds in the provision of allowing developers to build those units off-site. Now, we really don't think this provision's going to be used very often. There are not a lot of sites that a developer will own to be able to do this. The standards for building those units off-site is also very rigid. It would have to be built in the same area where the market units are being built. They have to be under construction before we would issue building permits for their market-rate project. It allows for, this ordinance allows another option for the conversion of market-rate units. And then it also builds in an in-lief fee program. And that in-lief fee program, we'll go over next. And it's important to note that it doesn't apply to every single project, but the in-lief eligibility really is to target those ownership projects where the affordability gap is really big. And then on smaller rental projects, we are recommending that a fee be charged based on a per-square foot, so that would be per-square feet of total leasable area or total for-sale area. For ownership, the square foot cost would be $29.40, $29.40, and then the rental fee would be $24.50. I have some scenarios of how this would work in real life. The first scenario is we have a vacant property. Developer comes in and he's wishing to propose a five-unit apartment project. This is for lease. And so we would take the number of units. If each one was 1,500 square feet, then we'd multiply 5 by 1,500, and then that rate of So a little, close to $200,000 in in-lief fee is what we would anticipate on that type of project. And then another key piece of this is, here's another example that showcases an existing property that has three units. So the trigger, as I mentioned, was five units. So if a developer comes in and wants to add two additional units to that site, the ordinance would now apply. But the in-lief fee requirement would only be based on that net new addition of units to the property, shown in this scenario. And then finally, this last scenario shows a ownership project. So the fee rate is higher, it's $29.40. And on a 50-unit project, if they're 1,500 square feet, you can see that the in-lief fee on this size of project is over $2 million. So part of this ordinance is not only to calculate the fees and get the affordable units, but it also builds in some requirements to ensure that these affordable units are planned carefully and they're monitored. Every applicant who comes in to propose a housing project that's subject to this ordinance would be required to prepare a housing plan. That housing plan would identify the number of units that are required, the location of units, the types of size of those units, and the level of affordability. The approval process will require a covenant that's going to be reviewed by our planning team, our city attorney, and then recorded against the property to ensure the affordability of these units. So that summarized the majority of what's proposed in this ordinance tonight. With this ordinance, if the city council were to adopt it, there are some other things that we still would need to do. And that would be to bring back a fee resolution for the city council's adoption, and that would put in place the in-lief fees. We would also need to create a housing trust fund and some policies to support how that housing trust fund would be used. So those would be immediate next steps following the ordinance adoption this evening. I am happy to answer any questions. This includes my staff report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Before I open it up for the hearing, do any of the council members have any questions of Sherry as to her presentation?
From your research, Sherry, do developers prefer to pay a fee instead of building more affordable units? Or is there just, there's no pattern?
I think developers would likely prefer to bill the fee, but to encourage, but the real goal of this ordinance is to get those units built. And we believe that the large projects are the types of projects that we're going to see, and therefore, they're not going to have the ability, if they're rental projects, to pay the fee. They're going to have to build them into the project.
On our questions right now, why don't we keep them to her presentation, and then we can come back and debate it? But any other questions? I did have, I was curious, you provided the project thresholds and how that compared, then, with the bonus density requirements. I know that to get a bonus density, you have, there's so many units, affordable units that you provide. And on that, I don't know what slide that was. But I can also bring that one back too, because that's more of a back and forth.
Bundling of incentives?
What's that?
Oh, did it deal with the bundling of incentives?
No, we, there are project thresholds that require, then it kicks in the inclusionary...
Five units or more.
Right. But then bonus, in order for a developer to get a bonus density, what do they have to offer?
Oh, very, that's a very good question. So for the ordinance specifically, we have thresholds, right? Is that, you're asking what the questions are for...
I tell you what, we'll come back, we'll come back, we'll come back to that one. On the in-lief fee, I think you, I'm looking at my notes here, I think you've answered the rest of them. So any other questions, Edward?
Just one, I'm not sure if it was on this slide deck, but I think maybe on the past presentations, if you don't, if you need a minute, that's fine, but if you could remind us some of the rents that would actually be charged?
Yes, those are all good questions, and I do have that information with me tonight.
Thanks.
So for example, if we're looking at, the numbers I showed you tonight also were 2025 numbers. It's the first time I've showed those in a PowerPoint presentation, because they are hot off the press as of April. So considering, let's say, a four, a household of four, right? The moderate, for moderate income, the moderate income rental rate would be about three, a little over $3,000. It's $3,198. For a household of four, for low income, that's $2,132. And then for very low, that's $1,333.
What about a household of two?
A household of two, for moderate, is a little over $2,500. For low, it's a little over $1,700. And then for very low, it's a little over $1,000.
Then this is a public hearing, and we will open up the public hearing now and ask, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item either for or against?
I have speaker cards.
We do have some speaker cards. Hold on one second, she will call, she will call you up.
Beginning with Melissa Taylor.
Melissa.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to see this being discussed and that it's finally happening. I know it's been an important topic in the community and with the council for a very long time, as long as I have been engaged with city council meetings. I believe it's one of the strategies we need to ensure housing for everyone in the future. One of the things that I am speaking about tonight is that in the conclusion of the 33 pages of the document, it says that the ordinance focuses on inclusionary requirement within the city's planned high-density corridors. I believe, and it says, "In the future, it could be amended to include all areas." I am coming and asking that if you could include that now as part of the affordable housing inclusionary ordinance and be forward-thinking, because we know how long it takes. This is nothing against you, this is just how things are and how you have to go back and forth. And we know that it would be terrible if it happened, but nobody's coming to Insonada's historic street and trying to build a five-level, or a five-building dwelling. So right now, if you put that in the ordinance, it really wouldn't have any effect, except for in the high-density areas. But heaven forbid, something, natural disaster happens that we saw in Altadena. And then people need to rebuild houses, and we have to change the thinking on that. If the ordinance in place doesn't reflect that, it's going to take time to go back and change. And I am just requesting to just be forward-thinking and into the future, include all areas. That way, when it does come up, if there does happen to be an area that can be developed, it can pass through with a quickness. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Daly. Good evening again.
Good evening.
I love what Melissa said. I run a food kitchen, and I'm dealing with people that are low-income. And as we were told tonight, the income levels, low-income, which is what they're going to be building for, was $84,000, low-income. Very-low income was $53,000. I worked for the postal service for 30 years. In retirement, I'm making something like $26,000 a year. And $31,000 is extremely low, so I'm extremely, extremely low for a household of one, okay? Currently, I'm, when I'm driving, working at the kitchen, I'm working with people that are looking for a place to rent or to purchase. And I have two people right now. One's got $2,000 and they've got a little baby, and the other one's a single man, and he's got $1,800 to spend. The first lady was $2,000. And as I drive through the city, I can't find anything for rent, you know, because I take pictures and then send it to them and tell them to apply. I would urge our city, I'm really glad that we're having this zoning ordinance, but I would like to urge the city to have a 15% set aside by the developers. Because like Melissa says, you know, things are going to change. And like when I'm looking at your numbers that you have, where it says 5 to 20 units only have to pay 6%, that's nothing. And 21 to 49 units, if you're building 49 units, you only have to give back 10%? That's nothing. So anyway, our city is very valuable, our property, and, you know, it's, we shouldn't just give it away. I'm with Melissa, it's like we need to, you know, keep the ball going and we need to keep the rate up there. The second thing is, I'm completely with her, it should be across the whole city, not just certain areas. I think that that would be just not a good idea. Let's see here. I remember when Oliver, she was here, and he was talking about we had 2,000 units they were going to build, it was going to be 10 units that they were going to build. They came up all around the Gold Line Station, which isn't the Gold Line Station, it's the L Station, or whatever station it is. And only 2% was afforded, affordable housing when you netted all of that. You know, out of 2,000 units, that's like, what, 20 houses, 200 houses? It's like, nothing. So anyway, I want the city to imagine what it would be like in five years, when there's going to be more seniors that are going to be retiring. And, you know, I'm seeing people that, you know, they're renting now, and thank God, so many people have not raised their rents up to market rate. And then the landlord dies, and then they sell the property. And now the people that are the tenants are having to be evicted because they're not going to be able to afford their new rents because everything's up. So anyway, I think that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a shortage of housing in Monrovia. Rentals, houses, apartments. Rentals, houses, apartments.
Next is Ellen Dower. It just was mistaken for PH1, so I apologize for that misunderstanding.
Anyone else wanting to speak on this item, sir? Did you fill out a card? If you could please just give us your name.
My name is Paul Grobard. I was at the last meeting that this committee, this development group had about this project. And my question was, they asked if anybody in the public, in the audience, once they speak or have anything to say about it. And they go ahead and they agree, and the project is passed, but they don't address anybody's.
It's not a project. We're talking about an ordinance, so I don't know.
They don't address anybody's concerns. Everybody that got up and spoke, nothing. Nobody's concerns were addressed. So people are saying, why, why even come? Why bother to say anything when nobody says anything back?
It's a public hearing, and this is your time and your right to say, to either speak on a for or against the ordinance.
But the ones that did never got anything answered or anything said back to them.
That, that, it's not, that's not the way, and maybe Mr. Steele, you could explain the, the hearing process.
Right. A public hearing is not a, a town hall. A public hearing affords members of the public the right to be heard. In some cases, council members take that input and factor it in. In other cases, they don't. But the, the essential right is to be heard, which is what we're doing with this public hearing and with the prior public hearings.
Why be heard? Nothing's going to be said back. If it's not a public meeting, then why don't they have one and have us come to it? Why wasn't there one in advance where you could come bring up these issues?
This is our third meeting on this?
The last meeting I went to with the development was the first one I ever got in the mail, anything that was notified. And I went around and talked to several people in the area, and not one of them was interested in coming down.
Okay, I think there might be some misunderstanding as to the purpose of this public hearing.
I know, but I'm saying, why come to a public hearing if you make it in the comment, and it means nothing, nothing's ever done about it?
Well, as all I can tell you is, we're doing, we're conducting a public hearing. This is your chance to speak your, your mind on the words.
If you don't come up and say something, and you want to bring it to court, it may not be allowed. I don't think that's true, but it does say that. So they're trying to get you to say something, but they don't want to say anything back.
Okay, well, thank you.
If it's another hearing or another way it should be done, then we should be notified where to come to and how we can do it.
Thank, thank you. Any, anyone else wanting to speak either for or against this item? Not hearing anything, I will then close that portion, the public hearing, and we will come back to staff and council. Any questions now of?
I would like to hear staff explain why we're doing a targeted approach as opposed to a citywide approach. I know we've covered that issue in public meetings. Maybe some people missed that when we talked about it before public hearings.
Yes. So the majority, we've looked at, one, the majority of the units that have been being produced today. They're all of our large housing projects currently in targeted areas. When I say targeted areas, they're based on the general plan's land use vision. So over 30 years ago, before the rail came to Monrovia, the former city council members, planners, knew the rail was going to come. They, and they had this vision of putting the higher density near transit. They also knew that housing was going to be needed, and they wanted to protect Monrovia's cherished neighborhoods. So part of the plan was, Monrovia is the fourth oldest city. Here in Monrovia, we have one of the most robust historic preservation programs. We have a wealth of historic resources, older neighborhoods. Back in 2016, 2015, 16, we also heard that from the community that neighborhood compatibility was really important to Monrovia. A large project that comes in could disrupt the setting of a neighborhood. The city has a neighborhood compatibility ordinance that looks on making sure individual developments don't disrupt neighborhoods. So thinking about where the types of housing developments that we've been getting over the last 10 years and where our land use plan really drives the density to accommodate those projects are within these areas. And that's the Station Square area, the South Myrtle Avenue corridor area, and then the west end of Huntington Drive. Those are the areas where Arena also is currently located. The other areas in the city that are zoned for residential high, which is the highest residential density in our, in our general plan, are really up against single-family neighborhoods or lower-density, lower-profile residential neighborhoods. So the first piece was to, to make sure that we didn't have an unintended consequence of incentivizing a project by allowing, by allowing a density bonus in those areas. So, and I think Mayor Chevlin.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Kind of brought that, a little bit of that to light, and I'll explain that. So one of the things that we heard through our developer survey was that for the ease of administering a program, it's always nice to have a program that lines up with other programs. Density bonus is one of the state's programs that incentivizes affordable housing. And it does that by allowing developers to set aside a portion of their project in exchange for more density and in exchange for waivers and concessions to development standards. So for example, if we have a height limit of, let's say, two floors or two stories in a multifamily residential neighborhood, and they have a requirement now to do affordable housing, if it lines up with the density bonus, that project could be larger. And it could be larger in an area where we may not have really intended for projects to be larger. So that was the first piece of this. But also, from a staff's perspective, it's important to note that this is, we're just starting off, right, on this availability to recoup affordable units in our, in our community. We intend that this ordinance is going to be monitored. My recommendation is that we bring it back, and we, we align it with our general plan annual report to see, is it doing what it's doing? Where are other housing being developed? Do we, do we need to expand it to other areas? And it would also be appropriate that time to increase, to adjust the fee annually. I think if the council were to consider opening it up citywide or discussing that, my recommendation would be to really move this ordinance forward tonight so we don't lose any more time on getting standards in place, because we could always bring the ordinance back for adjustment.
I just wanted to make a, if I may, a comment. I do agree with you as it relates to, we are making hedgeway. And in terms of moving us toward a place of, of housing justice, I do also have that concern of all of the affordable housing being located in one particular space or area. While it makes a lot of sense, and you present a wonderful argument, and I totally understood as it relates to that. But when you think about it and you look, look at that, and you recognize that if there's any affordable housing within our community, it's all located in one particular space and not located throughout. It might be affordable housing, but they're also next to mountains. And I'm not talking about these monstroses. I'm not talking about big buildings or anything. I'm talking about maybe one to five units, or whatever the case may be, that it will be appropriate for those particular communities. But yet, it's allowable and it's available, that just because you don't make a lot of money doesn't mean that you don't want to look at the mountains, you know? So I think that, you know, so that's, but I do agree that this is a big jump. And we have added a lot of housing, and I'm very proud of that and the work that you've done. I'm just, you know, remarking that that is a concern that, as I just stated.
So Sherri, like you said, if we had this ordinance in place prior to all of this going on now, we would have had more affordable housing, you know, during all this building, like, what's her name?
I was speaking, the lady.
Carol Daly.
Carol. Like Carol was saying, you know, yes, when Oliver was here, and we had all of those apartments in, in the pipeline, if we had the inclusionary housing at that time, then yes, we would have had more affordable housing. But that's why we're trying to bring it online now in order to try and capture some of that.
Well, thank you for moving this along. I know it's been a little bit of process for us all. And, and I'm sure you're ready for it to get over the finish line in some ways. I just wanted to point out a few of the things you already mentioned, I mean, in the staff report. And, and just over the time we've taken to study this, which is at least three, seems like three sessions, at least maybe four. And it's been even beyond that. But I feel like we have to repeat it a few times, because even though we're talking about this affordable housing, the rents that you just gave back are probably even higher than most folks in Monrovia are paying for their mortgages currently. So it's still going to be a challenge. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good step, right? Because we're trying to make sure the normal standard rent in Monrovia is not $4,000 a month, and because that's not affordable. I mean, we have the median household, median household, not, not median personal income, median household income in Monrovia. It's going up every year, but right now it's $97,000.
The, for a four-bedroom, for a four-person household, it's over $100,000 now.
Right, but, but in Monrovia, sorry, but in Monrovia, in statistics, I mean, let's say, hopefully it's the right stats. It's $97,000 is our household income in Monrovia here. And so if we look at, you know, rent burdens, usually if you're paying more than 30%, which in LA County, a lot of us are. But that's still, you know, like $24,000 to $30,000, let's say, range there that you're paying. And these rents are still, that we're going to say are coming in and providing. So we're just kind of trying to get there and make sure we set a foundation that says, hey, this can push down a little bit that rent cost by having those available as units that there. So I think it's a, it's, we need it, it's a necessity. I definitely think we could find ways to push beyond the smaller area that we're looking. I would really encourage us to do that. Just for everyone's awareness, you know, 59% of renters in LA County are considered rent burden. That's more than half. That means they can't, they're paying more than 30%. And there's even more folks that are paying like more than 50% of their income in rent. And when that happens, it means you don't go to downtown Monrovia and spend any money on restaurants, our businesses, because you're spending all on rent. So this is a good thing for our city to do, and I really appreciate it, and I applaud it. There was also a study that came out from Princeton recently that just shows that if you're rent burden, it leads to a higher mortality rate. And we can understand that. And when you're stressed out, you can't make rent payments, you can't afford food, you're not going to live as long. So these are really, really important things, and I hope we can move this forward. And I would definitely like to make a motion that we approve this current.
I still have some comments. Go finish, do you have any other comments?
I'll just make the motion if you have.
I did, and yes, Sherri, that was what I was trying to get at, the unintended consequence. Because even though, and I think I'm all for options, we need as many options and be as flexible as we possibly can to make a project come to fruition. Because we can have all the ordinances in the world, but if we can't get it so that the developer believes that it's, it's going to be a return for him, they're, they're not going to build here. And it's a double loss. The bonus density is where I was talking about, is where if, to make the, the project pencil out, it was better to go with the bonus density and make the project more dense. And that's where you have, you've got some issues there. In terms of having it, and I consider it maybe more of a pilot, let me ask you. In terms of, if we want to do, and there's a couple of things we could do here. Depending on the market, and right now, it's, it's kind of crazy that no one has a crystal ball, and if they do, it's broken. So at any rate, going, going forward though, I mean, obviously, I'm just curious. How many people do you come and talk across your counter that are looking to build something? Build units in Monrovia? How, how often does that happen?
Well, the majority of the units right now that people are building are ADUs, right? This ordinance would not apply to ADUs. I can say that we do believe that our Station Square area has capacity for more units, and we're still experiencing interest in those areas. And those would be the, the real big projects where we can capitalize on building in those units.
I, I guess where I'm going with this is that if we were to put even six months on it and to monitor what is coming in at the, at the counter, what are, what kind of questions are we getting? What is not working? What is turning them away? What's bringing them back to have that conversation?
We could definitely do that.
But initially go with the, the recommendation, and then bring it back in six months to see what, if, if we can make some fine-tune. And I would say, bring it back every six months and not, don't wait a year to do that. That's a, an alternative.
Madam Mayor, that was going to be my question. How often would we monitor the effectiveness of the ordinance? Would it be every six months or a year?
Well, I'm talking about monitoring the actual conversations that are happening at the counter. Who, who is, who's coming in? Who's asking the questions? What kind of inquiries are we getting? Are they turned off? Or they, you know, what are they asking? What do they want?
What, what we've seen just in past years, and we know this through our general plan annual report, is that we are getting developments for single-family home additions, a lot of ADU development. If they're lower-density multifamily, they're small. They're for, they're four-unit projects. We get very rarely something between the four-unit and the 100-unit. That's what we've experienced and have tracked over the last, for this six-cycle housing year.
Well, and then if we get nothing.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah, but we don't know the future. So monitoring is very important. And the other thing I'd like just to add, just for some level of comfort, is just, this is just one of many of our planning tools that we're implementing to gain affordable housing. We've removed CUP requirements. We've reduced our dense, our dwelling unit size. We're facilitating the ADU production, which is another huge goal for producing affordable housing. In addition, the state has other requirements that also build in protections for existing affordable units or units that are maybe being occupied by individuals who would meet those categories of the affordable income levels, but they're not deed-restricted units. And that's through SB 330. So anytime you demolish an existing development with multifamily, they're required to do an analysis that looks at the affordability income levels of those who's resided in those units for the past five years. And that's, has been another, we, we are facilitating those reviews in-house when developments do come up. So that offers another hopeful, you know, all these little pieces to, to try to build our capacity for affordable housing here.
There's, and there's also, there's pending, there, well, there's several things pending in legislation. But one that would create even, it's kind of double downs on, on SB 9, where you can even build more within that single lot, which is kind of scary too. It's a lot of high, high density, and we have no, that's by right kind of stuff. But anyway, going back to our, what we're talking about right now. I, I really, so that we really know how we can tailor this to get the best outcome for all, everyone involved. I'd really like to know what is really pushing the buttons of those people that are coming to the counter, or what kind of questions you're having. I do a lot of this work, subdivision work. It's condominiums and planned developments. I will tell you, there's a lot of ADU addition to the planned, especially planned developments. They're adding, whereas before we didn't think that that would ever happen, well, you can do it now. And they're adding ADUs to a planned development. So.
Can I ask you a question, Mayor? So are you, are you saying that we want to find out what the builders need? Or what are we trying to find out?
We, we're providing our, our framework. And we're saying, if you want to build here, this is what you have to comply with. you want to build here, this is what you have to comply with. I want to know, is that, are they walking? Are they saying, do you have something else?
This is like, we've been doing this for a minute. So I think that it, you know what I mean? This is not the first time we're talking about this.
But we don't, but we haven't, it hasn't been in place. That, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it, put it in place, but to, to have it, that the, as recommended for the, it was for a certain, certain zone or something, and then come back and, you can make it every six months so that we can fine tune it to make sure it's what we, what we want, or what is attracting people to come and actually build what we want to see, and not hopefully the high.
Couldn't we do that when we go through the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it isn't, but the, the motion is actually, it's.
Can I make a motion for you?
You can, you can, you can, you can put the six-month thing in it.
Do you mind if I go for that? Take a stab at it?
Yeah.
But I'm going to change it for you.
Okay.
See how this goes. But I, I would make a motion to adopt and introduce a read-by-title way for the reading of this ordinance with the caveat in addition that we come back in six months and make it actually citywide.
I second.
Make what citywide?
What?
So did we catch that?
Right, to make sure that it applies citywide to all land uses in the city.
And that, and that would have the opportunity that when it comes back, it wouldn't be automatic. Again, we would come back and it would go through the same, it would be the whole process of, of doing a public hearing, correct? Right, and the planning commission. So it, but I really, really, really want to encourage our staff, our counter staff and our planning staff to really engage with the developers as to how we can fine tune this to make sure that we're, we're getting that product that we want, that we are actually getting those units built. So, there you go. So we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmembers Beldon.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Spicer. Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mayor Chevlin.
Yes. Okay. There you go. Thank you, thank you, staff, and thank you to our consultants. Thank you very much. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
It's ordinance number 2025-03, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Monrovia, California, adding Chapter 17.42 Affordable Housing Requirements to the Monrovia Municipal Code and finding the adoption of the ordinance to be categorically exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we are moving on to our second public hearing, public hearing regarding vacancy levels and recruitment and retention efforts pursuant to Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code Section 3502.3. And this is a receive and file, and Mr., oh, Lauren's doing it.
Thank you. Yes.
Oh, yes, it does say Lauren. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor Chevlin and City Council. So yes, tonight I'll be presenting on Assembly Bill 2561 and the new requirements. AB 2561 was signed into law on September 22, 2024, and went into effect January 1 of 2025. And its purpose was to improve transparency around staffing shortages in public agencies. And this was really based on statewide employee input. So the new language and the new law now requires the city to hold an annual public hearing before the final budget adoption, and to report on the agency's vacancy rates, recruitment efforts, and hiring obstacles. In addition, if any bargaining group's vacancy rates reaches or exceeds 20% of the authorized positions, additional data would be provided upon requests such things as hiring timelines, compensation benefits, and working conditions. And also, the represented employee groups may also present on recruitment and retention efforts related to vacancies within their bargaining units. Here in Monrovia, we have three represented groups. We have the Monrovia Fire Association, MFA. We have the Monrovia Police Officers Association, MPOA, and we have the Monrovia Municipal Employee Association, MMEA. And under the new law, failure to comply with these new requirements could result in unfair practice charges through the California Public Employment Relations Board, who are responsible for the compliance. So to that end, the city has 244.75 authorized positions. They are listed by category groups in this table. Staff track the vacancies and recruitment efforts for the city starting from December 31 of 2024 to present time. And overall, the city's vacancy rate is 4.9%, which is considered low. Of the 244.75 authorized positions, 206.75 are members of the city's three association groups, represented groups. And there is a typo in the staff report, my apologies, it's not 201, it's 206.75. So of those, according to the law compliance regulations, of the bargaining groups, MFA has one vacancy, which is a vacancy rate of 2.6%. MPOA has four vacancies, which is a rate of 5.7%. And MMEA has seven vacancies, which is a rate of 7.2%. And just kind of honing down to those represented groups, no bargaining group currently meets or exceeds that 20% vacancy threshold, and so wouldn't trigger any enhanced reporting under the new legislation. And of note, we are actually recruiting for two vacancies in MMEA and one vacancy in MPOA, but because the regulations of this new law, we had to report as of today. But we will have those vacancies filled here shortly. And when we do, the percentages for MMEA will go from 7.2% to 5.1%. For P O A, it'll go from 5.7% to 4.3%, and the city's total will go from 4.9 to 3.7%. But I couldn't include that into the report as adhering to the, the regulations. Now, in terms of vacancies, there, there are a number of reasons why we have vacancies that really range from factors, including retirements, internal promotions, resignations, and terminations. So in terms of the recruitment activity, a recruitment process typically takes up to 12 weeks, that's an average, of both safety and non-safety recruitments. If I dwindle that down a little bit, the non-safety recruitments usually take about six to eight weeks to complete the whole recruitment cycle. And then with the safety for police and fire, it usually, it can take up to six months, given the background, the extensive background and testing requirements that are, that are needed. But typically, a recruitment process includes the planning process with the hiring department, the posting to job announcements, the applicant testing and interviews, selecting the candidate, and then passing the pre-employment processes, and then eventually onboarding the new, the new employee. In 2024, the city filled 52 full-time positions and 56 part-time positions, and human resources staff reviewed 2,595 applications for full-time positions and 1,670 applications for part-time positions. And so this really demonstrates there still is consistent interest in the city's employment opportunities when they arise. And the city also encourages and supports succession planning efforts to enhance employee morale and promote career growth, and does, does try to hire within if there is an opportunity. In terms of employee separations, in 2024, we had 27 full-time authorized employees separated from the city of Monrovia. The reasons for their departure were that 14 employees voluntarily resigned, going for other opportunities that were out in the market. Nine employees retired, and four employees were released from probation. And then these separation figures reflect kind of the broader, the, the separation of employees going for other opportunities reflect broader workforce mobility trends that are related to alternative work schedule, compensation benefits, and then just pathways to, to advancement. In this chart, it tracks the full-time turnover over the last five years, and this helps us assess long-term patterns and informs us how we adjust our workforce strategies. You'll see here in 2025, it's, it's low comparative to the past five years, and this is because we're mid-year of the calendar year, and we do anticipate more retirements at the end of the year, which will increase these numbers. You'll see in 2023, there was a peak, and in this year, we had seven retirements, and we had 10 resignations with staff seeking opportunities in the market. There were a lot of opportunities at that time. And then in 2024, we had a, I wouldn't say it's historical, but we had large numbers of retirees, including two department heads as well. So we, we had significant retirements at that time. But we'll continue to track and adjust our workforce strategies as needed to be able to report back. Moving to employee retention, retention remains to be a central focus for the city's workforce strategy. And in 2024, the city implemented several initiatives designed to improve employee satisfaction, promote longevity, and enhance professional growth. Those efforts included a 2023 classification and compensation study, which provided market-aligned wage adjustments as of January of 2024. Currently, the city is on year three of the five-year MOUs. Those are the contracts with the bargaining groups incorporating competitive wages and benefits. We also provide ongoing professional development through in-person and online training programs. And we promote engagement efforts, including hosting employee summer barbecues, the employee holiday recognition event and awards, as well as numerous small engagement events throughout the year, which help us reinforce the importance of engagement strategies to support employee retentions. So to wrap up this presentation, today's presentation and the public hearing fulfills the requirements of AB 2561. All groups are under the 20% vacancy threshold with an overall vacancy rate of 4.9%. And staff is recommending City Council receive and file this report following a public hearing.
Any questions of Lauren? You have fulfilled your duty.
Thank you.
Can we just receive and file, no motion required? Thank, thank you very much. Yes, this is required under law that we do this before the, a budget is approved. So, no, no, there's no, there's no public hearing or anything, it's. Oh, okay, if, if, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We are still, we are in a public hearing. Yes, I, thank you very much, Edward. She did fulfill her duty, but yes, I need to fulfill my duty and open this up. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wanting to speak or address this matter? Not seeing anyone, I will close the public hearing and come back. And again, this is a receive and file. It shall, it is received and it shall be filed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Edward. Okay, reports of city manager and staff, RCM1, Mr. Feek.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd just like to say thank you to the City Council for the generous gift. That was, that was fun to do today.
How could we pass up your 40th birthday?
It was, it was exciting. I appreciate it very much. And just for, for purposes of keeping it short, you've got the directives log update in front of you. The only one item I'd like to add is that we have recently completed work on the Route 66 mural on East Huntington Drive. He'll be looking to schedule some kind of a ribbon cutting or ceremony where the council can invite the public to come and talk, meet the artist, and kind of celebrate what's a pretty significant art piece. There's a lot of really unique challenges to, and partnerships created with doing that project. So we'll look forward to doing something in the future. That's the only update I have this evening. Thank you.
Great. Any questions of Dylan?
So are there, are there updates on Canyon Park? I, I am really nervous about sharing dates, and I know that's what everyone's wanting for, but, but I will tell you that we have been, we've been working very closely with Edison, we'll continue to work closely with Edison. The moment that they tell us we're going to be here on this date is when we'll start scheduling ribbon cutting ceremony. We, we are still expecting and hoping, fingers crossed, that we can reopen the park in June. That's our plan. We expect to have a couple dignitary events and celebrations with a lot of the commissions and volunteers and folks who've been working hard to reopen the park over the years, as well as a public reception and reopening. Just for those who are listening, I would add that we are planning to open the park during the week without the reservation system, but we, we plan to use the reservation system during the weekends, especially as there are a lot of trail areas that were burned during the January wildfires. And we're just, we just expect there to be a significant inflow of guests coming back to the park on weekends. So we want to try to, while we get our feet under us, make sure that we're trying to manage that chaos the best we can.
And I, I did want to mention, since we are on your report, Mr. Feek will not be at our next meeting. He's going on, well deserved, having, spending family time and nice trip. So we will miss you though at the next meeting. Okay, then moving on to RCM2, Appointment of Delegate and Alternate to San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee. Mr. Feek?
I'll take this one as well. The, the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, as well as its member agencies, are all busy preparing for the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games. Just for context, we've been advised that if you think of a Super Bowl coming to a community, which we've had Super Bowls here recently, they expect the Olympics to equate to eight Super Bowls a day for 20 days straight. It will be significant, a number of 15 million additional spectators, athletes, vendors, all converging on Los Angeles County. So, you know, three years is going to, it's coming, it's coming fast. In order to create a forum for the COG member and relevant stakeholders to kind of formulate regional priorities, collaborate, and develop recommendations to the governing board, the COG has recommended that a 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee be created. The COG's governing board will approve the creation of this committee, appoint membership at their June meeting. Received an email request last week that the city of Monrovia, as well as all member agencies, provide names of interested council members or community members, can be anyone, who may be willing to serve on this committee. The committee would have a limited term, it would end on December 31, 2028. Limited purpose of advising governing board on opportunities, support for the member agencies in preparing for planning and hosting the 2028 Olympic Games. This will provide time following Olympics. Ending in December 20, 31, 2028 provides time for the body to convene, collect comments, evaluate what worked. Certainly, there will be a lot of lessons and takeaways too.
Dylan, I do need to correct you. You said it was open to the public. It's, it's electeds and staff members.
Thank you. I, I, thank you. I should have clarified, it does not have to be an elected official, it can be staff representing the cities. Committee will establish its own goals, select the chair of the first meeting. These are just some of your common duties of the committees. I think it's expected they're going to focus on issues of transportation, mobility, community activations like events, workforce development, economic development, and any other topic which might impact the member cities. Here's where I get into who can be, like, the committee may elect, and may include elected and non-elected representatives from COG member agencies, affiliates, and other stakeholders. Only representatives from the COG member agencies and affiliates may have a voting seat. Because the committee cannot constitute a quorum of the COG governing board, nor any standing policy committee with relevant subject matter, COG staff will work with the COG board president to establish the committee's membership. So it should be made clear that even though we may be recommending names to the COG for consideration, ultimately, it'll be the COG governing board and the staff who will determine who's on this committee. The COG requested each agency only nominate one delegate and one alternate for consideration. Due to quorum limitations, self-nomination is not a guarantee of appointment. The deadline to submit nominations on behalf of the city of Monrovia is June 10, 2025. So we do not expect there to be any environmental impacts or any financial impacts at this point in time. They're just requesting that we share names of those who may be interested to serve on the committee to the governing board, who will make a determination at their meeting later this month. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that I may.
If, if possible, I'd like to put my name in the hat. I would love to be considered. I don't know how it works if, if I, we can discuss this as a, as a, as a board, but I know that I'm very interested in this, and. And Dylan and I had an opportunity to go and go to a meeting prior, not with the COG, of course. And I've also had an opportunity to have some discussions with LAEDC. I've been to a couple of meetings. But I'd like to definitely put my name forward. I would like to be considered.
Sounds great. I would love to join you if possible, too, potentially.
And I know that Mr. Spicer is also. I, I did want to mention to you, because I talked to Dylan, in trying to figure out this quorum thing, I talked to COG staff, and oh my goodness, I'm not quite sure how they're going to do that. And for ourselves, for Monrovia, I think in addition to that, we ourselves can also meet as a council and decide whether we be planning activities. I know that Pacific Production, who does our sound, they have expressed interest in doing watch parties and things like that. So there are a lot of opportunities for us just as our council. Forget the quorum at the, at the, at the COG, to have conversations as to what we can do. Also, the meetings, these meetings at the COG, they will be open to the public. So if you were not either the liaison or the alternate, you could still go. And also, they will be on Zoom, so you could also monitor via Zoom. You just wouldn't be able to, and I don't know how often they'll actually make recommendations or vote. You wouldn't be a part of that vote of a recommendation. So there will be, going forward, many opportunities for just us as our council and staff working on projects that will benefit Monrovia. And also, the plan is, is that this will be rotational on a yearly basis. So there will be plenty of opportunity for that to turn over. And depending on people's availability, they'll be able to participate.
So who do you do, who do you put forth in June?
Well, in talking to Dylan, I mean, you would, we could put in all three. I can't say right at this very moment that if we say Larry's the liaison, you're the alternate, or you're the alternar, or whatever combination. I can't say that it would turn out that way depending on what those quorum requirements are that they're putting together. So it's really crazy.
Larry and Tamela down.
Okay. All right, well, then between the two, if you have a gentleman or a lady's agreement, is there one of you that would agree to be the
Originally, that I wanted to be the liaison. Thank you. That was easy.
But it's all good. I'm good. Okay, so we've, we've got Tamela as the liaison and Larry as an alternate. And again, I really want to also concentrate on what we, as a city and our, and our council can do.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. If I could, I'll, I'll provide a letter to the COG just recognizing our delegate and our alternate. And then we'll be sure to provide them any support and information needed as they continue representing the City of Monrovia at the COG on this committee. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. Okay, then RCM3 is our SPOT program update. And I know it says Tina Cherry, but we are going to hear from Tiffany this evening. Peterson.
This is my favorite program. Good evening, Mayor Chevlin and council members. Tonight, I am happy to provide an update on the summer program and opportunities for teens, also known as our SPOT program. We're really excited. It's actually starting this Friday, June 6th. So we're really excited to provide this update for you. First off, we'll start off with our 2024 recap of the program. So with the support from council, we really focused on making the program more exciting and accessible for the teens. In fact, we are very proud to say that we were awarded the California Parks and Recreation Society Award of Excellence for Creating Community. So we're really excited about that. As this program started to develop, we were really eager to introduce new incentives like giveaways and added fun, fun elements like to the, to the program, like video gaming trailers and laser tag. We averaged about 100 teens per night, with one of our nights at our highest peak of 126 participants. Over, over 50% of our participants were Monrovia Unified School District students, so that's great to hear. We also received great feedback from Motab, along with several old-town businesses noticing positive impacts on Friday nights. We also had some amazing community partners that helped create a wonderful, wonderful experience each week. Some of these partners included the Monrovia Cap Team, Simply Divine, Namaste Beauty Lounge, Pasadena City College, and our very own Eugene Sook as a caricature artist. Thought I was going to get that word wrong, but I'm proud of myself that I did not. Next up, we have our program approach for our 2025 program. So really, what we're going to continue to do this year is really engage our 6th through 12th graders again, continue to create that teen-only space atmosphere for them to enjoy with their friends in Library Park, include popular activities that we had last year, similar to mini golf and laser tag, but also include new activities such as an escape room trailer and rock climbing. We're going to continue to build and connect with the teens by having consistent staff weekly to be able to continue to build those friendships and relationships with one another. We're also going to continue to collaborate with community partners and continue to do direct outreach and promotions throughout the middle schools, the high school, and several city service organizations. Next up for our program outreach, our outreach, our outreach plans have included, obviously, our Summer Monrovia Today, our weekly city managers' updates that we've been promoting in, our school campus visits. We've gone on to several school campuses during lunch and after school to promote the program, our city youth programs, such as our YES internships, or YES interns, our youth commission, TAB, and our Monrovia Area Partnership, and also walking through our Friday Night Street Fair and promoting throughout Library Park over the last month or so. And then our partnerships. Our partnerships are a big part of our SPOT success. The participants really enjoy being able to hang out with their friends, play some games, and enjoy a delicious bite on a Friday evening. And this is due all in part to our, our partnerships and our community building that we've been doing. We've teamed up with a variety of old-town merchants for our weekly meals and prizes. Some of these restaurants that have contributed to helping this program is Wendy's, JB Burgers, and newly-added Paris Baguette. Our weekly treats have also included Mumumia, Boba Box, and Jamba Juice. We've also continued to incorporate weekly gift cards from Teapumps, Coldstones, and Look Cinema. And each week, we will, we will be collaborating with additional community partners, again, like the Teen Advisory Board, Canyon Park, Monrovia Area Partnership, and local businesses like Smitten on Paper, Makers &amp; Clay, and Black Cat Fables Bookstore.
Could you just get back to the previous scene? Is that part of the work that Eugene did, that caricature right there?
That is, yes.
Wow.
The kids really had a fun time. He even actually created a caricature for each of our staff as well, so.
Did he do it for the council members?
I'm sure he can. We can get him out here. This site is our schedule, so our breakdown for 2025. Like I said, the SPOT program does begin this Friday, so we're very excited for that. And it's going to be running through August 4th, with the exception of July 4th, because we're all going to be having a huge Fourth of July bash on Library Park. But each week is really themed, has a themed event, so like Putt Palooza, a dodgeball tournament, a beach party bash, and then rounding out the summer, we're going to have a carnival-themed night out in the park. And then, along with that, all the local businesses will continue to support food and prizes, and will rotate in some of the favorite activities that we had last year, such as soccer, henna, and arts and crafts. So we just wanted to thank you again, council, for all your support with this SPOT program. We're looking forward to another fun, safe, and memorable summer with these wonderful Monrovia teens. And, you know, we're eager to start. The team has done a great job in planning and doing all the efforts to get started. And they're, they're ready to hit the ground running again for the 2025 program.
Thank you. Great job. Great job. I mean, I know we've got to get the kids there, but you guys work so hard and do a great job.
Let's have one question.
Sure.
What time is the food served?
So the entire event runs from 5:00 to 9:30. We try to keep the food till about 6 o'clock. Sometimes where the first hour is a little bit slow, because people are kind of funneling in. They start usually at the street fair and then work their way up to Library Park. So we really usually get an influx of food, like giving out food about 6 o'clock. It's there right at 5, but we usually have that influx at 6 o'clock.
Well, I just want to also say that I was there last year, and I was so impressed as I watched the staff totally engage the kids, so friendly, so outgoing, and, and the staff just really cared. And I really was, I just loved that. And I'm sure this year is going to be even better.
I observed, too, and I didn't know who was having more fun, the kids or the staff.
Are you going to have that oversized furniture again?
Yes, we're going to have the inflatable chairs outside. We're going to have a couple of photo booths. We have this surfing simulator that's kind of like, like if you're riding a mechanical bull, it's actually a mechanical surfboard with an inflatable piece on the bottom. So we've incorporated some new enhancements to the actual larger activities for the evenings. So we're eager to start and hopefully succeed that 100 participant from last year for each night, so.
Great.
So people that assume they're teenage can still participate, right?
You know, it depends on who comes by. But yes, you're welcome every night.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you so much.
Okay, then we will begin then with our reports of city council. And I know, Mr. Spicer, you've got a nice report. Why don't we start with you?
Okay, I'll start off with our amazing community services. This Sunday, we will have Hit Me '90s, playing all your pop favorites at Station Square Park. Don't forget that we'll also have a variety of food to purchase and a beer garden each week. On June 15th, we will have a mariachi music. The Summer Monrovia Today is now available with classes starting later this month. Check out the new senior programs, trips and tours, art classes, fitness classes, and more. Remember, scholarships are available for youth who qualify through the generous support of the MPWR, Monrovia Parks Wilderness and Recreation Foundation. And that's all from there. I also have the opportunity to graduate from the Citizen Police Academy. And I want to thank Sergeant, I'm a butcher's name, but I'm going to do it anyway. Sergeant Bethan, Bethan Lamy?
Bethan.
Right. Officer Thomas Montez. SRO Officer Jasmine Hogan and the SGB Care Team. This, this was my second police academy, and I have to really say that this class was one of the best. It was very engaging. The officers there, they, they were some of the best, because they were engaging with the, with the students quite a bit. A lot of the fun was hearing the ride-alongs from the different, from the different people that attend. That was a part of the class. Did you go on the ride-along, Sergio?
I had gone on a previous occasion.
Yeah, I have went before, too. I didn't want to go again, because I went to sleep.
I didn't want to ride the police car.
But it was actually real good. And, and finally, I'm going to give a report on the NUSA, Neighborhood USA. City staff and I had the opportunity to attend the Neighborhood USA Conference in Jacksonville, Florida, the week of the 19th. NUSA is an organization focused on building and strengthening neighborhood organizations. It provides opportunity for diverse people and organizations to share their ideas, values, and experience to build stronger communities. NUSA offers an awards program that recognizes the good work being done in cities and neighborhoods across the United States. Staff had the pleasure of submitting two of Monrovia's programs for an award consideration. The first program was our Youth Employment Service, the YES Internship. YES provides leadership opportunities, improved job readiness, and employment opportunities for our Monrovia youth. The second program was the Monrovia Treasures. This program celebrates historical, historically significant Monrovians by installing public art in their honor within residential neighborhoods. I am so excited. I'll say that again. I'm so excited.
So excited.
So excited. That was a song, huh? Yeah, but I'm, I'm not going to hide this, though. To announce that the Neighborhood Treasures was recognized as a program finalist. And the Neighborhood, and the YES Internship Program won second place. So we did bring home some bacon. So I'd like to thank Sherry, Carrie, and you can pass those. Oh, you guys want to see them? Sherry, Carrie, and Jocelyn for their hard work. And they, they really put on a show there. They should have won, to be honest with you, because I told them I wasn't going to say it, but I think they had them in the wrong category. You know, the team that won, well, the organization that won, they shouldn't have never been in the same category as us, because they were a nonprofit organization. But hey, Sherry, my hat's out. Well, I don't wear a hat, but you know, my wig is off to you, okay? And your team. You guys did an awesome job at the last minute. Thank you. And that, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Great. Edward.
Hard to follow up after that. Last week, I think a few of us were invited, had an honor to go spend some time with Dr. Lucy Jones and go take a quick tour around the San Gabriel Valley to look at the threats of the earthquakes in the area, and also wildfire threats, and just discuss that, and let's learn really a lot. And also, you know, get a picture with Dr. Lucy Jones, right, which is pretty outstanding. If anyone has a chance, I think they, they have a little program in the institute, so I think they are offering more tours and chances to look at all the great instruments at Caltech. Very informative, of course, very eye-opening in terms of the threats we face on a daily basis here, which I think most of us know. But there are some, some things that I did take back in terms of ways we can, one, even look at, if we are willing or want to, there's, there's building codes we can adopt that are, you know, state building codes that we are a little more on the optional side. But we're allowed to kind of bump them up on our own individual municipality, and they might be worthwhile to look at. As well as one thing that I think we should definitely take a look at, and I meant, I'll try to get some more information for our Public Works folks, but there are some new pipes out there that are, and you probably know about Alex, but there's some pipes that apparently Lucy Jones and LA Department of Water and Power are using nowadays for their large water mains to kind of help reduce impacts from earthquakes. So supposedly, they've come down in price. So maybe they're comparable and something we might want to think about in the future. So that was one thing. Had the pleasure to join many of you all at the Monrovia Garden Club recently for their gala and award ceremony. You didn't want to bring up Boys and Girls Club?
Oh, you could go ahead.
All right, well, yeah, sharing a little bit, that's, that's nice. Yeah, well, I'll, I'll leave that one to somebody else in a while. Pick up. But one thing I do want to mention as well, the Clean Power Alliance, the power provider, or I shouldn't say power provider, but the, I guess we could call them the power provider, but the one that we purchase power for in our city, if you're signed up and have opted in to keep that. The rates are going to be going up. They're adopting new rates this week. And just want to make sure I give you guys the, the rates that we'll be voting on. These are rates that they adjust on an annual basis to make sure we're comparable with cost, but also comparable with SCE as a standard rate there. So the lean power rates on a bill comparison level will be zero, so they'll be on par with Edison rates. If you want to go in the clean category, it'd probably go up to about 2% of a, on an average, your bill would be higher. And if you went for the 100% green, it would probably be about 8%. I think they are expecting, though, that that rate comparison to balance out in a few months, because Edison's kind of at a little lower period right now, but it'll bounce back up, and then it'll probably be on par even more. And that's going to be happening in a vote on, on Thursday at the board meeting there. And otherwise, the CPA also does have a residential, it's air conditioners, but they're the smaller room air conditioners that have a rebate program out right now. It's about $300 for energy-efficient Energy Star AC units that are out there. And I think you may have already had it in the city manager report, but might be worthwhile to put out there. but might be worthwhile to put out there since we had a heat spell for like a day. And I'm sure we'll have many more in the rest of the summer. But it's a great opportunity for folks that qualify and to have, save a little bit of money and get a nice air conditioner at the same time. Thanks, that's it for me.
Great, thank you, Edward. Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too, along with Councilman Larry Spicer, graduated from the Monrovia Police Department Citizens Academy, and it was a wonderful experience. It was an eight-week course that tells you on the inside what it's like for Monrovia's first responders. One of the things that I got out of it is the whole concept of community policing. They protect us, they serve us, but they also need our help. That's what community policing is about. We have to work together as a team. And they did a wonderful presentation, a wonderful job. And they're going to have a new citizens academy that's coming up. I think, I have pictures of the graduating class, I don't know if we have it, Sarah, do we have that? Okay, there's going to be a new class forming, it's going to start August the 20th. And the contact information is Sergeant D. Bartholome. The number is 626-256-8020, and you can get the details. Or if you're here in the audience, I can give you a flyer, which I have. That's our latest graduating class right there. Everybody enjoyed it, it was an experience you'll never forget. It was interaction, it was a Q and A, it was wonderful. So I highly recommend it. And in that same theme, I also took my car to get to the Monrovia PT Explorer Post 132 Car Wash. And they're mostly these young people that want to be police officers, they're explorers right now. They're mostly self-funded. They hold car washes and other events so that they can go to conferences and actually compete with other young people, other explorer programs from other communities. And they worked hard washing those cars. And as well, in my neighborhood, the Brad Oaks neighborhood of Monrovia, we had a neighborhood watch meeting. And there was four police representatives that went, two police officers, and two that were backup, excuse me, I should say, support staff as well. They answered the questions, they showed the neighbors how to use the onsite on our Monrovia City Council website. They have a map where you can see your neighborhood to see if there's been any criminal activity or reports in the neighborhood. It was great, the police interacted with the neighbors. There was a big turnout, I think there was, I think I counted 18 neighbors, including myself. So there was a lot of interest there. And as well, I also wanted to thank and congratulate the Monrovia Parks Wilderness and Recreation Nonprofit. They had a fundraiser at Lord Empanada, and I want to thank Lord Empanada. My understanding is that they generously donated a portion of the proceeds to the nonprofit. Here in Monrovia, our businesses support the nonprofits, they support the community. They don't just see it as an opportunity to make money, they see it as an opportunity to give back, put back into the community. And I want to thank both Empower and Lord Empanada for doing that. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. I want to remark on the concert in the park, it was the kickoff. And this past Sunday, I got there two hours early for, I thought it started at a different time. But I want you to know that it was packed, that's why I was so confused. Because it was packed, the park was packed, it was booming, and the band was, I thought they were getting ready to get started for two hours straight. I mean, because they kept tuning up their instruments. So I was getting ready for two hours, but, and they finally came on and at the right time, not finally, as in they were late. But it was a really great turnout for the first one. And what I really loved to see was all the vending, I think that was the first time that was going on with the beer garden, and it was just a beautiful evening. And I was, to my pleasant surprise, that it was just so well attended for the first one. So good job, staff, on that, I had a really great time. There was no room on the dance floor, so I didn't get a chance to get over there. Let me tell you, there's regulars that fill that floor before you can ever get a chance. So you got to get there early if you want to dance. The other opportunity we had, along with my colleagues, we were able to go to the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Award, and that's just another example of so many things that are going on. Fred's, they had an event on the same day, and they didn't know that the Boys and Girls Club was having an event. And so we had so many community members just flooding the community with wonderful activity on a beautiful Sunday. And it's just one of the wonderful things about Monrovia, there's always something going on and an opportunity for us to really connect with one another. And that's proven to cause us to live longer. So I anticipate us being on a new special one day saying, why are these people living so long? Well, it's because of our events. Anyway, June 7th, I want us to know that our reading program starts at the Monrovia Library, June 7th. It's the reading, summer reading program, there's the kickoff there, it starts at 12, from 12 to 4. And that's always a wonderful opportunity. Parents, please, get your children some books this summer. I know it's so easy to stay on our iPads and phones and those types of things, but let's get connected in reading this summer, there's a wonderful program going on.
It's for adults too?
Oh, it's for adults, okay, yes, all ages. So make sure you go to the library on June 7th from 12 to 4. That's it, thank you.
Great, yes, lots of things going on. It seems like the last couple of weeks have been a total blur. The day after our last council meeting, I did have the opportunity to go to the Business Life Magazine, their 35th anniversary celebration, it was at the Castaways up in Burbank, but I was representing, I was, I've been an awardee before for the Women Achievers, and I was asked to come and provide comments for their happy anniversary. So I gladly did that. And then also, I was able to attend the Memorial Day Tribute at the Live Oak Memorial Park, put on by the Upper San Gabriel, the Upper San Gabriel Valley Allied Veterans Council, that's always a wonderful event. They don't publicize it enough, it occurs every year at the Live Oak Memorial Park. Very moving presentation, observance of Memorial Day in honor of all of our fallen heroes. So I, every year, say you got to publicize it more. I mean, you can't even find it if you go looking for it online. But it's a wonderful event for a very, very wonderful cause. I did also, I know there've been a lot of other things mentioned here, I wanted to say thank you to staff for putting on a most awesome kindergarten, preschool, kindergarten, what did you call that, a play day? Here at Library Park, and they had city vehicles and things like that. And they loved honking the horn on that Public Works truck. And they just, on and on and on. And Dylan was trying to master a small miniature, what was that, air horn? But it was a great time, they had all sorts, they had little obstacle courses, all sorts of things that they could do out on the grass, they had crafts, they had the vehicles. And so it was a really fun time just to open it up for the school kids. And that was, that was a lot of fun. And I have to say, I ran into a parent in the grocery store the other night, and they were just staring at me, and I said, I smiled back, and they said, we know you. And I said, oh, yeah. And the little boys looking at me, they were a part of the third grade tours, and it was from Brad Oaks. And he had such a good time. So that's really wonderful when you run into the kids out in the public, and they had a great time. I also had the opportunity of going on, last week, on the 28th, to Sacramento with a contingency from the Council of Governments. And it was really to thank the San Gabriel Valley Legislative Caucus and also some others, to thank them for signing on to an ask for, we've asked for $100 million for, most of that, 75 million is for the Regional Housing Trust, which we hope we can, we can get, we can be hopeful. And then there's some others, smaller items for the COG. But the Regional Housing Trust, we talked about housing today, that's really, really important in that Regional Housing Trust do make projects possible. Not the whole thing, but they provide important gap funding. Tomorrow night, I will be representing the city at the MHS graduation. And so that is a thrill and an honor for me to be representing all of you at the graduation. And at the Foothill Transit, their last governing board meeting and executive board meeting, I was elected as the chair for the board. So I will be starting that. So I am their newly elected chair, so I'm very honored and proud to do that. And I carry on a long, long history. Bob Bartlett was one of the founding members of Foothill Transit. So it's nice to carry on some tradition there. And I think, I did, I wanted, I was going to end here, other than say, Happy Father's Day to everyone, that, I can't even believe I'm saying that, that will occur before our next meeting. So Happy Father's Day to everyone. There were a couple of events that are coming up in the meantime. I did want to mention our Passing Humane Free Adoption Day, and that's going to be this Saturday. So if you're looking to adopt an animal, please check out the Passing Humane Society. That will be from 10 until 2 on Saturday, the 7th. And our Monrovia Community Gardens at the Colorado and Magnolia, I think that is? Is that Magnolia, yes. They will be having a volunteer day from 9 until noon. So come on, you want to go, if you like doing some gardening and getting kind of dirty, come on out and help them out, clean up their beds. And I wanted to, I shared this at, and Tina did an awesome job at our coordinating council meeting, talking about all the summer programming, and boy, by the time she was finished, you were tired and the summer hasn't even started. But this is a quote from, I was to give the, I gave the inspiration at our meeting that day. This is from Lou Holtz, and this was kind of a message for graduates. And I'm not a football buff or a college football buff, but Lou Holtz, as I understand, is a former Notre Dame football coach. At any rate, and is known for his memorable quotes that focus on leadership, life, and motivation. And the one that I chose is that, okay, your talent determines what you can do. Your motivation determines how much you're willing to do. Your attitude determines how well you will do it. So that's the message, not just for graduates, but for all of us. That's a good, a good message. So with that, I'll end my report on that note, and we are entering the homestretch here. We've got two administrative report items. So AR1 is Agreement with Pro Park LLC, DBA Empire Transportation, for the Continued Provision of Americans with Disabilities Act compliant transportation, yada, 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 et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, Alex.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council again. So as you mentioned, Mayor, the item for you tonight is an agreement with Pro Park for the continued provision of transportation services. I did want to take a moment to recognize Sofia Sousa, who's our management analyst in the Public Works Department, along with our Deputy Director, Victoria Rocha, and the audience. These are the primary team members that work on Go Monrovia. So all the hard work and behind-the-scenes data collection and analysis happens between the two of them. So with that, I'm actually going to pass this to Sofia to talk to you about all the hard work that she's been doing over the last several months since the last time we spoke.
All right, Sofia.
Thank you, Alex, and good evening, Mayor Shaveland and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, it's truly my pleasure, and.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Oh, no. It's all good, I'm glad to be here. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on Go Monrovia. Tonight, we'll start by providing an overall update on the program, following the changes that started earlier this year. Then we're going to discuss the items related to the proposed contract award, including the request for proposals, contract scope of work, and funding. And we'll close with staff's recommendation for tonight. So starting with the Go Monrovia update. At the end of last year, council met several times to discuss Go Monrovia's finances and operations. Council's priorities included keeping transportation options available in Monrovia in a financially sustainable way, freeing up transportation funds for capital improvement projects, aligning service hours with actual ridership demand, preserving late-night and event-based service, for example, transportation to and from the Monrovia Friday Night Street Fair, and researching additional service options for Monrovia Transit. And then on December 17th, council approved adjusted service hours for both the Lift Pass and Monrovia Transit, and increased the price per trip using the Go Monrovia Lift Pass. Without these changes, the program would have operated at a loss. So first, we'll start with the status of Go Monrovia as a whole. And now that we have four months' worth of data, we'd like to show the immediate impact of the program changes that began on February 10th, 2025, and that date is marked by the gray dash line on the graph. This graph shows the total monthly ridership for each service, which is the total number of trips taken in a given month. It starts in July 2023, which is when both services began operating on that 24/7 basis. The pink line represents the number of trips taken using the Lift Pass, and the blue represents the number of trips taken using Monrovia Transit. So prior to the changes in February, you'll see that the Lift Pass ridership was steadily increasing, while Monrovia Transit ridership increased at a slower rate. Right after these changes, where that gray dash line is, Lyft ridership dropped sharply. In contrast, Monrovia Transit saw minimal change, but that's because most of the riders were already traveling within the service hours, the new service hours. The drop in Lyft Pass ridership might indicate that riders are now being more selective with how and when they use the Lift Pass. We know that when the Lift Pass costs $3, there were individual riders using the pass upwards of 80 or 90 times in a month. So it's possible that this decline might reflect a reduction in pass use from those repeat riders. And while that immediate decline was expected, we anticipate total trips will gradually rebound as people adjust to the new service hours and costs, evening out at a monthly average just above the lowest ridership point you see here. In fact, you can already see the slight uptick in trips from May 2025 compared to April just before. So later on, we'll show how this change in ridership has helped reduce program costs. But for now, we'll still look at the ridership. So this chart takes a look at Lift Pass ridership at each hour of the day under the new service hours and Lift Pass fare. We can see that people tend to use the pass more often during the weekdays, which are the blue bars, versus weekends, which are the orange bars. You'll also notice less ridership during the late-night hours, which are those final three bars on the end. And that's to be expected. Ultimately, this data shows that the Lift Pass is being used in every hour that's set by the new schedule. So moving on to the expenditures. This graph shows the monthly cost of each service, with the Lift Pass in pink and Transit in blue. This graph also starts in July 2023, when both services began operating on that 24/7 basis. Monthly costs for the Lift Pass fluctuate more significantly, since the cost depends on Lyft's pricing model and the number of trips that are taken each month. Additionally, the rider pays a fixed cost per trip, and the city pays that remaining cost, which is determined by Lyft's algorithm, adding another element of variability to the cost. Monrovia Transit costs are more steady because of the city's agreement with the contractor, which allows for more control over the costs. In the second half of 2023, the Lift Pass costs roughly $50,000 to $60,000 each month, and that's going to be that first part of the graph that you see here, while Monrovia Transit costs around $80,000 to $90,000 each month. As Lyft Pass ridership and the cost per the Lyft trip continue to increase, so too do the Lift Pass costs per month, which is that pink line growing on the graph. Just before the program changes were implemented, which is that gray dotted line again, the Lift Pass monthly cost peaked at about $152,000, which occurred in the month of December 2024. So following the program changes, council was able to successfully reduce costs to a more financially sustainable operation. Since the rider's cost per trip is higher, the city pays a little less per trip. And now that the Lift Pass costs, and now the Lift Pass has a monthly expenditure of about $40,000 to $50,000 each month, and Monrovia Transit is roughly $75,000 a month. And later, we'll come back to this to look at how the reduction in fees has freed up some funds for CIP projects. So we just completed the first section on Go Monrovia, reviewing the ridership and expenditure trends since the program changed. trends since the program changes in February. And now we're gonna switch gears and discuss the Monrovia Transit contract, which is what council will be voting on tonight. The Go Monrovia piece is still useful information because when we evaluate the proposed contract, we'll also take a look at the transportation budget as a whole. So based on council feedback and required by Metro, staff issued an RFP for Monrovia Transit Services earlier this year. To make sure all the vendors were aware of the opportunity, staff published newspaper ads and posted to the city website and contacted local transit, transit agencies, letting them know of our RFP. Staff hosted an online pre-proposal conference to make sure the expectations of the RFP were clear, and we had a total of nine attendees across five different companies listed on this slide. And staff received 58 questions in total and posted written responses on the website. Staff received three total responses to the RFP at different price points. Staff disqualified the proposal received from GoGo Technologies since their scope of work only included dispatching services and would require that the city procure additional drivers and a vendor for, uh, or additional vehicles and a vendor for the drivers. So as you can see here, Pro Park was the lowest qualified bidder, which is why staff is recommending the approval of the contract with Pro Park. So with the lowest bidder identified, I'm now gonna talk about the details of the proposed contract with Pro Park and the funding related to the contracts, um, and Go Monrovia as a whole. So Pro Park will continue operating Monrovia Transit under the current service model as described on the slide, should the proposed contract be approved. Pro Park will make sure there's always at least one driver available for on-demand rides or ride requests through the Lift App, helping the city stay compliant with the Department of Justice's requirement for equal service for individuals with disabilities. Pro Park will also help with dignitary transportation and other special events as needed, similar to how they just assisted with the Monrovia Days Parade. This slide shows the fee schedule for the proposed contract. The base contract totals about $2.7 million over the span of three years. The cost increases each year reflect CPI adjustments and potential increases in driver hours. And the contract includes options to extend for two additional one-year periods, and we'll come back to these totals in just a second. But first, I wanted to take another look at the Go Monrovia funding. So this slide shows the various funding sources for Go Monrovia, including Monrovia Transit, which is funded by One Time Grants and contract reimbursements with Bradbury and the County and Metro Local Return Funds. So what's important to remember here is that Metro Local Return Funds support Monrovia Transit, but they also support the Lift Pass and Metro-funded CIP projects. So reducing costs for both the Lift Pass and Monrovia Transit is helpful to free up funds for CIP. So back to the proposed schedule, fee schedule. The slide shows the proposed contract, estimated annual lift costs and estimated funds available for CIP projects. So this slide reflects everything we've discussed so far. Council approved changes to Go Monrovia, which helped reduce overall program costs, especially the variable costs related to Lift. Staff released an RFP to ensure the next contract for Monrovia Transit would be competitive. And these two actions come together, reducing the overall Go Monrovia program costs, freeing up transportation funds that can be used towards CIP projects, which you'll see over $500,000 is expected to be available in the next two years. In summary, with the recent changes to the Go Monrovia program and proposed contract with Pro Park, the city will continue operating within its means and additional funds will be available to support CIP projects. Given the information we reviewed tonight, staff is recommending that the city council approve an agreement with Pro Park for the provision of ADA compliant transportation as part of the Go Monrovia program for fiscal years 2025, 2026 through 2027, 2028, in an amount not to exceed $2,732,609, with options to extend for two additional one-year periods. And in doing so, council will continue to support the goals listed on the slide. Staff will also provide Go Monrovia expenditure updates every six months to ensure that the program meets these goals in a financially sustainable way. And thank you for your time, council. I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Sophia? I, I was getting all excited about the, the amount, looking at it, thinking, oh, that's such a huge amount. And then I saw what park, what is it? Park America, EGADs. That is a huge difference between the, the two. But anyway. Edward, did you?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you for going out to bid and looking to, to see what was out there in terms of companies willing to, uh, uh, provide those services and making sure we're getting a, a, um, real costs, new cost evaluations and a chance to see, um, if we could lower those costs. And it seems like we did get a, a good bid. I think I had reached out recently to Alex and, uh, and Dylan. And I don't know if Alex, do you want to just have an update on that, uh, any of the conversations with, um, uh, the conversation was just with, uh, Metro Micro, who, um, offer a service in Altadena, Pasadena and Sierra Madre right now. And I think in theory, so you'll fill me in and see if I'm totally off, um, it's, it's almost like a Lyft service that they provide, but I do believe they also provide ADA within that's their own service. So in theory, maybe we could even just use them for everything and, and really lower our costs for all of it. But don't know if that's an option, so maybe Dylan, sorry, Alex could help, um, if there's anything, any thoughts of that at all?
Yeah, and thank you for that, Mr. Belden. So as Councilmember Belden mentioned, um, uh, he reached out to Metro Micro, um, who's a transit provider in several different communities here locally in the area. Um, we're reaching out and trying to coordinate a date where we can speak to them about the program details of those communities and if it's a viable option to eventually or for the consideration of the council to replace Go Monrovia in some form or fashion. Um, we've had previous conversations with Metro about their, um, pilot program. At their earlier stages, it wasn't a viable option for Monrovia. As they've expanded into other communities, it does seem like there's a potential for that. Um, at this point, though, it's unclear if they're able to do what we're asking of them. Um, but we're certainly happy to chat with them and see what their capabilities are and then report back to council.
Sounds good.
If we approve this contract today for however, what are our, like if next year Metro Micro says, yeah, we can bring you onboard, what are our opportunities to, what are we on the hook for in terms of this current contract then?
Um, the, the contract before you tonight does have a termination clause, similar to stipulations of other contracts that the council has approved in the past, where we would provide written notice to Pro Park should council approve that tonight. Um, and then we would not be on the hook for anything further beyond the point of which they've provided service. So we would have the ability to terminate that contract and then enter into a new contract for transportation services, should the council provide that direction.
But, but Alex, just make sure, you know, you check everything because, you know, cheaper isn't always better. Okay? So that's just my opinion. I would like for you to look at everything because of what all we've gone through over the years prior to all of this. And I just don't want to be back in the same old thing.
Well, I know, yeah, and I know that earlier on, like you mentioned, they weren't, it, it wasn't viable for what we needed.
Absolutely, that's noted. We'll look into that, too.
So if there are no other questions for staff, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the agreement with Pro Park LLC, DBA Empire Transportation for the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act compliant transportation as part of the Go Monrovia program for fiscal years 2025, 26 through 2027, 28, in an amount not to exceed $2,732,609, with two one-year options to extend.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Belden?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Spicer?
Great report, Sophia. Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mayor Shavelin.
Yes. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great report. Moving on then to AR2, provide authority for the city manager to enter into contracts for legal services and investigation services for confidential personnel matters. Mr. Steele?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, recognizing I'm the only person standing between you all and another piece of birthday cake, I'm gonna make this really brief, uh, because you just gave the staff report. Uh, in the municipal code, the, the city manager has contracting authority for up to $25,000, um, as well as for contracts with land use consultants to do secret documents for projects where the developer's gonna pay the bill. But that $25,000 limit has proved to be, um, kind of low in some instances where we have confidential personnel matters and investigators have to be retained to work on those matters or lawyers, um, to advise in a disciplined process. And so what we're proposing is rather than having to bring those contracts to council, which, um, threaten the confidentiality of those proceedings, um, that the city manager would have authority of up to $50,000 for that type of, um, contract. The expenses, the warrant would still come before the city council in cases where we are permitted by the personnel rules to, um, provide information to the council. As you know, we, we, we do that where we can. So there would be, um, oversight, um, and the ability for the council to know about these expenditures. It's just a situation where it's untenable to try to bring a contract before the council and not be able to tell you publicly what it's for, um, due to the legal confidentiality requirements of the personnel situation. So we're proposing just a simple update to the code to raise that threshold for those specific matters to $50,000 and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Steele?
I don't see the $50,000 in the ordinance, though. Do I see it? Maybe I missed it? I don't see that number, the new threshold.
He doesn't see where it says $50,000.
Actually.
That's because it's missing in the text that's in your packet, and I'm not sure how that happened. But the, we'll, we'll make sure to revise the ordinance to be $50,000. The, from what's, I'm not sure how this got in the packet and the wrong, the wrong version got here, but I appreciate you finding that mistake.
So it's the same except the dollar amount? With that notation, do we have a, a motion?
Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Belden?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mayor Shavelin.
Yes. With that.
We just have to read that title.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 25, 25-07, ordinance of the City Council of City of Monrovia, amending section 3.24.100, professional services of chapter 3.24, purchasing bidding and sale procedures of Title III Revenue and Finance of the Monrovia Municipal Code, to delegate to the city manager the authority to retain legal counsel and/or investigators for confidential personnel matters.
Thank you very much, and that brings us to the end of our meeting. Uh, next scheduled meeting will be here in these chambers on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 7:30 PM. And as I mentioned, Mr. Feek will not be with us, um, at that meeting, but we will have our wonderful Lauren Vasquez, Assistant City Manager, and so she will be sitting in the, the hot seat then that, that night.
Hot seat.
Yeah. And, uh, so we'll be, we'll be very nice. And it is, I, I, I wish I'd actually had some babies to acknowledge at the beginning of the meeting, but it's nice, though, at the adjournment not to be adjourned, have to adjourn in the name and memory of someone. So, uh, with that, again, uh, Happy Father's Day. That will occur before we meet again. And so for all the fathers, um, you have a great, great day. Dylan, you have a great vacation and a great birthday. And with that, we are adjourned at 10:14. Yeah. Dylan, I'm sorry. Yeah.